Feeling your among the same.
Good morning, good evening.
Good evening. So welcome in session seven. Egypt and Exodus part two. Uh, we are still in the period of Exodus. Now while our Bible narrative uh covers Exodus nineteen, chapter nineteen to forty. Fundamental book will be Leviticus and our color is uh. Uh, you're parting number C. Good evening, Aunt Marie Chris. Welcome po.
Good evening po.
Hi po, and then we have uh Kuya Val. Good evening po.
Good evening po.
Nasa biyahe pa po ba kayo?
Ah, po, maybe na sa labas lang po eh.
Ah, di, so ingat po, ingat lang po sa biyahe, no? So simulan natin sa isang uh 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 dasala, no? Pero bago 'yung gasal uh, 'yung ating unang uh, taba dito. Ayan 'yung ating.
Come Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of your faithful and kindle in them the fire of your love. Send forth your spirit and they shall be created, and you shall renew the face of the earth. O God, who by the light of the Holy Spirit did instruct the hearts of the faithful, grant that by the same Holy Spirit we may be truly wise and ever enjoy his consolations. Through Christ our Lord, amen.
And I say unto you, love your enemies; bless them that curse you; do good to them that hate you; and pray for them which despitefully use you and persecute you.
Which is the first commandment of all.
Hear, O Israel; the Lord our God is one Lord. Thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, and with all thy soul, and with all thy might, and with all thy strength. This is the first and great commandment, and the second is like unto it, thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. On these two commandments hang all the law and the prophets.
Master, thou hast said the truth. There is one God, and none other but he. And to love him with all the heart, and with all the understanding, and with all the soul, and with all the strength, and to love his neighbor as himself, is more than all the whole burnt offerings and sacrifices.
Thou art not far from the kingdom of God.
Good evening, everyone. Our prayer tonight is taken from a reflection written by Father Tony Conway, a redemptorist in May nineteen eighty-seven, and is among the prayers and reflections published in his book From Both Sides Now. The title of the reflection is Exodus. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. They da- they sang, danced, acted out the ancient journey out of a multitude of Egypt's ancient struggle of today, tomorrow, yesterday, the next forty days, the last four hundred years. Same story of oppression, struggle, hope of deliverance, same God yet new. For a once passive people now crying, raging over the great destruction of their daughter Jerusalem. Different land yet same terrain of awakening, crawling, running through the, through arid hills, deserts of pain, fear, courage, hope to the promised land flowing with justice, peace, freedom, the milk and honey of today's journey. Different characters, same experience, Moses of the Pecat Line in the Egypt of the Bataan Export Processing Zone. These young people of Lipa, some so young indeed, yet so wounded, sang and danced the story of lives crippled yet empowered. They broke, cried, eyes red with tears of pain and anger. It was no act, it was their story, and my story. I broke too, as they danced upon the hills, across the deserts of my journey, cried with them. As their grief watch washed over me became mine, crashing waves of my own red sea. I rose from the depths to sing with tears our story of Exodus. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Auntie Lee, for the uh cheering, for the prayer. So tonight, we have the following objectives. Uh, number one, we to realize that God hears the cries of his people and comes down and reveals himself. In our readings, we, we saw or we experienced how uh God manifested himself, no? In uh, in different forms, in uh, his love, uh, in his uh care, his uh protection to the Israelites. Uh, he also manifested his coming down and revealing his name, revealing his presence uh through the uh, 'yung ilaw, no, ilaw in the evening, and then also the clouds. We also uh uh experienced how he revealed himself in the tabernacle. Uh, secondly, we would like to recognize in this session that God delivers his people from bondage so that they can worship him. Remember, in the past session, for four hundred years, they were in bondage. Not only that uh, they were working for the Egyptians, uh, they didn't have time to, to build relationship with God. So. Just like how we experience our life, siguro, some of us may have experienced this uh, some suppression, no? Uh, kung bata, panay nagiging ambala, at uh, we are preoccupied with so many things and we forget that we shouldn't have or we should strengthen in the relationships here with God. And then in turn, uh, to respect that God gives his people a way to live and worship. Remember, sa plat natin, no, so we started with Adam and Eve, uh, the holy couple, and then from uh, kay, 'yung plat natin was moved to the holy family, at 'yung day, the uh, uh Noah, no? And then we moved to the holy tribes. At 'yung, the, the, the uh, uh, na, and isa'ta mga dito nga, 'yung line is of Judah. 'Yung line is of Judah, nakumusta-an, uh, dito lumabas 'yung uh, si Moses. Uh, dito ang pinatawag, pinanayon ay to become a holy nation. And eto 'yung plat na, na nagmumub, dalu sa promise of God, no? Uh, so nakakaapat na plat, so we have two more. Uh, kung titignan natin, uh, kung sisilit tayo, uh, further sa ating ginagaharanan, you will see the royal kingdom, and then 'yung gay, 'yung the universal blessing. Etto 'yung uh, dalalawang promises ni, ni God's atin. So nanunutay ngayon, this is the promise of making Israel being the firstborn of all the nations. Uh, gagawin niyang holy nation. Uh, kaya kinokoncentrate niya ang bayarin ko, meaning uh, sa mahapang panahon, uh, hin, naglalangas siyang mahihanda, no? Uh, in our readings, maraming preparations na tinahanan ang mga Israelites. Remember, parang uh, Exodus is a, tabi nga, para rehabilitation period, no? Rehabilitation period na mga uh, Israelites from uh, the gods of Egypt, no? 'Yung idolatry and even 'yung culture, na kung saan, palaging binabalik-balikan. Etto 'yung palaging, nakah, nagiging difficulty nila. They want to go to God, they want to worship God, yet uh, sabi nga, isang cheering 'yung last session is, they are addicted, they are addicted to the culture of the Egyptians. Eto ngayon, eto ay 'yung ating ano, ano ang nangyari? Ano ang nangyari to session seven ito? Ano 'yung, 'yung preparations na hinanda, no? Uh, remember, even in our readings, ay napansin natin how they were prepared, no? Uh, dun sa, sa military, kasi alam nila na, na may mga ibang mga bansa nasasakop sa kanila. So they have to be ready. So, eto 'yung ating, uh, titignan ngayon 'yung gabi nito, alright? So, before that, let us welcome muna si uh, Kuya Boots. Good evening po. Nice to have you around po ngayon, then.
Good evening po, everyone.
And then si Auntie Elena. Uh, yeah, Auntie Elena, and bless, good evening Auntie Elena. Okay.
Welcome to the Bible Timeline, the Story of Salvation. I'm Jeff Cavens, and today in session seven, we're going to be looking at the second half of Egypt and Exodus. This is the red color on your timeline bracelet, and this is the Book of Exodus, the second part. Today, we're going to take a look at Israel as Israel comes out of Egyptian bondage, and now they're going to make their way to Mount Sinai, and at Mount Sinai, God is going to work at bringing formation to his people because he's called them to a task. He has a vision for them. So let's begin with prayer. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, we continually thank you for giving us your word and the ability to study your word and to comprehend your thoughts. Truly, we can't do this without the help of the Holy Spirit. We also thank you for giving us the power to live according to your word. Lord, we love you, and we thank you that you have come to dwell among us and in us. For that, we are eternally grateful. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen. Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Well, as I mentioned in our last lesson, we find at the beginning of Exodus that Israel has been in Egypt for four hundred years, and during that four hundred year period, they have become quite, if you will, addicted to Egyptian gods. God is going to deliver them from their addiction, from their bondage, and he's going to form them into a kingdom of priests as his firstborn among the nations. And God has redeemed them, but the problem is at this point, after they have been freed from Egypt, is that they really don't know who God is. They really don't know who he is, and they really don't know who they are. Their identity is still kind of out there, and they haven't grasped it yet. And in today's lesson, we're going to see that God is going to give them their identities. Specifically, in verse six of chapter nineteen, they are called to be a kingdom of priests, a holy nation. The firstborn among all the nations, they are the ones who are going to be a kingdom of priests, which priests are, the Hebrew word is kohen, kohenim, plural. A priest is someone who goes between God and others, and that's what their role is. They're going to be the ones to bring the good news of God to the nations and to live a life where they are an example, and they're manifesting God's presence to the world. He's also during this lesson at Sinai going to give them the law. He's going to give them the law, and he's also going to give them a tabernacle. Now, he's going to give them a gift in the Sabbath, and that's really quite a gift because you have to remember that Israel has been in bondage for four hundred years. And in that four hundred year period, they've been slaves, they've been beaten down, they've been humiliated, and it's work, work, work. And now God redeems them, and every week, for one whole day, God is going to say, timeout, rest. Take a rest. And that's a beautiful thing, and that, so that's new, and you have to put yourself in their position to really understand that. But perhaps above all, the greatest thing that we're going to see in the lesson today is that God, unlike the Greek and the Roman gods who are above the clouds and oftentimes make sport of humans and, and uh, speak in a demeaning way about humans, God, the God of Israel, is going to live among them. He is going to live among them, he's going to tabernacle among them, and he's going to walk with them, and he's going to lead them and guide them and provide for them. And that is amazing news for Israel who's been in bondage all of these years. Now, just to review real quickly, as you look at the Bible timeline chart, you can see that when we talk about the God's family plan, we have a series of six major covenants that we're following in salvation history, all the way back at creation and with Adam and Eve, and then with Noah, with one holy family, and then Abraham, with one holy tribe. And now in this lesson, specifically in chapter twenty-four, God is going to enter into covenant with Israel and is going to raise them up to become a nation, and that nation is a nation of priests. And so, in chapter nineteen, just to start off, we do see in verse six where it says, God says, "And you shall be to me a kingdom of priests and a holy nation." In verse eight, the people responded to God, and they said to God that all that the Lord has spoken, we will do. We will do all that the Lord has spoken. And so, we have what we would call the, the terms of the covenant. Uh, that's in chapter nineteen, and in chapter twenty, very quickly, God is going to lay out the terms of the covenant, what he expects of Israel in this covenant relationship, and that's the Ten Commandments. So you have the listing of the Ten Commandments in chapter twenty, and the listing of the Ten Commandments is a question that comes up quite a bit, and that is, do we still have to obey those commands, those Ten Commandments? And the answer to that is absolutely. That's the moral law. In fact, one whole quarter of the catechism is given to the moral law, the Ten Commandments. That's the third pillar, it's life in Christ. And so, if you take the Ten Commandments and you were to put them in human form, you'd have Jesus walking around, just like the beatitudes in the Matthew's Gospel. You have Jesus embodying the, the Ten Commandments, living according to the Ten Commandments, and so they, they supersede all generations, they go beyond time. They are the universal law, the Ten Commandments. But you and I, and I want to put this in perspective, you and I, we think about the, the law in the Old Testament quite differently than Israel did. We read the words of David where he said that, "I love your law." And we think, wow, I love your law, all we can think of is, I've been delivered from that. I'm free, thank God, we're not living under the law. Now, that word law that God is going to give them in chapter twenty, and there's going to be subsequent laws too, that law, that word law comes from the word Torah, T-O-R-A-H. And the word Torah has a root word, yarrah, Y-A-R-A-H, yarrah. And yarrah means to throw or to cast, and it is used oftentimes in an archer's term, literally to, to throw or cast with the idea of hitting the bullseye, hitting the mark. You know, like a, like a bow and arrow, to hit the mark. You're casting, and what is the mark? The glory of God, the very presence of God, to be with God, the beatific vision forever and ever and ever. That's the law, and the law is given to Israel to assist Israel after they're taken out of bondage so that they can live this life as a nation of priests. Now, we don't think of law like that, do we? I mean, when was the last time you and your sweetheart said, you know what, tonight's going to be a great night. I'm going to buy a bottle of Merlot, we're going to build a fire, cuddle up on the couch, and we're going to read that new Department of Vehicle Motor Manual. It's going to be really good, especially that part about motorcycles, it's going to be great. There's some new laws that came out, sweetie. Nobody thinks like that, we don't think of the law that way. The reason that Israel appreciates the law and falls in love with the law is this. The law must be understood in the context of covenant and relationship. It must be understood in the context of covenant and relationship. What do I mean by that? Let me give you, let me give you an example. Now, how many of you know that, that, that people from the outside of the Catholic Church sometimes will say, well, your religion is a religion of dos and don'ts, black and white, rules and regulations? How many of you have ever heard that? I've heard that before, I've even heard that unfortunately from within the church, people saying that. Now let me show you what that's like. When I first started dating Emily, my wife, when we first started dating, there was no rules on our relationship. Really, I can go out with anybody I want, stay up as late as I want, I can buy whatever I want, I can go wherever I want. But then the more serious we, we got in the relationship, we came to a place where, where we got engaged. Now, imagine this, the first night we go out, what if we go out and our first night was a place called Snuffy's Malt Shop, for the record? First night we go out, I'm sitting across from her and I say, uh, listen, before we go any further, I just um, I want a couple things understood. From this point on, you don't see anybody else. Got it? And concerning the menu you're looking at there, I don't have a lot of money right now, keep it under five, okay? And uh, I'm going to be getting out of here a little bit early because I got some things that I want to do this evening, okay? Capisce? That's all, okay? Alright. Now, how many of you, if I went out with you the first night, what would be your opinion of me? You like that, huh? Huh? No, you'd say, down with you, or you must be joking or something. Well, as I started going out with Emily and we got engaged, a whole bunch of rules came in. No longer did I go out with other girls. I didn't go out with other girls. And uh, I, I started treating our money as our money. I just couldn't spend money the way I wanted to anymore. I realized that we were going to be developing a family, and I had certain restrictions on me. And then when we got married, a whole group of rules came in from Emily. Now, do I like the rules that she places on this relationship? Yeah. Yeah. No, of course I do. And then, what are the rules? "I don't go out with other women, I come home at night. I don't just call and say, 'I'm coming home next week.'" "What?" "Ah, you heard me, I'm coming home next week. What are you going to do? None of your business." I'm in a covenant relationship now, and so there's all of these rules and regulations that come on, and I'm doing it gladly, and she's doing it gladly, because I'm in a covenant relationship, and these rules and these regulations are for the good of the relationship, right? So, we have to understand that Israel's laws are in the context of covenant love and fidelity. And what you're reading in the Ten Commandments is basically God saying to Israel, number one, you're not dating anybody else. You're not going to go out with other gods. There are no other gods to go out with, there's only one, and that's me. And then, we read all of the different aspects of that. And then, back to the church. People who don't understand that we're in a covenant relationship with Jesus, and this is his bride, will look at it as rules and regulations, and they'll say, "How can you do that?" That's the same as saying to me today, "How can you only stick with one woman, Jeff? What is wrong with you? This is the zeros we're living in." And I'll say to them, "You don't understand what a covenant relationship is. I'm happy to listen to the church. I'm happy to walk in according to the teachings of the church because I realize it's for my good." Real quick story, when I was growing up. When I was growing up, I got my license when I was 16 years old, and I learned a lot about law from my dad. And when I got my license, that first day, I went to my dad and I said, "Dad, I want to drive the car." And he said, "Fine, bub, here's the keys, be home at 10 o'clock." And I said, "Gotcha." He's good at that. So I said, "Gotcha." And I went out there, and I drove around, I went to my girlfriend's house, picked her up, drove around in my dad's fancy station wagon. And I got home about seven minutes after 10:00. And my dad is standing at the door like this, and he says, "You're late." And I said, "Oh, I know," and I kind of blew it off, you know, "I know, but you know, it's the first time, I don't know the roads," you know. And he said, "Tomorrow night, you'll be home at 9:00." "9:00?" And I had that opinion that many of you have had about your parents. "You were put on this earth to ruin my life." How limiting. "Why?" He said, "Because, Jeff, I meant what I said. Be home when I tell you to be home." Next night, I went out, picked up my girlfriend, drove around, came home at about eight minutes after 9:00. My dad is standing at the front door, "You're late." "Oh, I know, but traffic, you know, and everything." And I was just sitting in the driveway and talking to my girlfriend, you know, about God and everything, and... And my dad looked at me and he said, "Give me the keys." And I said, "What?" He said, "Give me the keys." And I said, "Why?" He said, "You're not driving for a week." I said, "Whoa." He said, "Jeff, I meant what I said." Now, I have to ask you, did my dad hate me? Did my dad have a thing about controlling my life? Did my dad want to limit me? No. He wanted me to learn obedience because it would mean my life someday. And so, about it, I didn't disobey my dad very often, and if I was going to be late, I knew that I had to really count the cost. Is this going to be worth coming in late tonight? Well, yeah, a few times. And so, I paid the piper on that one. But about a year later, I came home, I was supposed to be home at about 11:00, I came home at about 11:50, and I'll never remember, never forget it. I came home and I came into the driveway and I thought, "Okay, I'm dead. What am I going to do? What am I going to do? I'm 15 minutes late." And all of a sudden, I got this idea. Batteries wear out. And I took my watch and I turned it back to 11:00. You know how parents can tell if their kids are lying? So I turned it back to 11:00, I went inside the house, you know, walked up there, my dad is standing right in the door, and he's doing like this. "You're late. Where were you? We're worried." "Late? Really? I don't think so. I have 11:00." And my dad will never forget what my dad taught me that night. He slowly took off his watch with great purpose, and he put that watch in front of me and he said, "Son, this watch is the only watch that matters." And I'm shaking. And it turns out, he was up in the window looking down in the driveway, right through the windshield of me doing this. And he said, "You can play with your watch, and you can turn your watch back all you want, but this is the one we're going to go by." And I never forgot it. My friends, you can turn your watch to whatever time you want to turn it, but one day, you will stand before God and you will be judged, not on your watch, but on his watch. He loves you, and he has set forth his law so that you will have life. You can either obey or disobey, or you can deceive yourself in any area of church teaching. God loves you, and that's the law that he's given Israel here today. To miss the mark is chet in Hebrew. It is to miss the mark, the law is so that you'll hit the mark, but it takes an obedient heart, a humble heart, a contrite heart, one that trusts God completely, and that's what they're going to be learning here. And so, he gives them the Ten Commandments. He gives them the Ten Commandments, and the first commandment, the first commandment, I'm not going to go through them all, but I'd like to touch on the first one. The first commandment in chapter 20 is that you shall have, verses three and four, "You shall have no other gods." It says, "You shall have no other gods before me, and you shall not make for yourself a grave an image." Now, the Catholic Church takes the first two commands and puts them together. Protestants have a different numbering system. Frankly, this is not a point of contention or a point to argue, they're just different. The Catholics put the first two together, so combined, they make up the first commandment. And the Catechism, in paragraph 2085, tells us why this commandment is number one. Why it's number one. You know why it's number one? Because your chief vocation as a Christian is to manifest the presence of God. It's to manifest God to the world. Every baptized Catholic has a mandate on their life to manifest God to the nations. And if there is more than one God in your life, then you are a false witness, at best, a confusing witness. And so, God says, "There are no other gods before me." And that will have an impact on our witness to the world. So if you have other gods like money or power, you will have a confusing message to the world. Now, paragraph 2116 tells us in the Catechism, let me read this to you real quickly. Paragraph 2116 in the Catechism says, and this is listed under the first commandment. It's really interesting how many people break this commandment and they're not even aware of it. It says, "All forms of divination are to be rejected, recourse to Satan or demons, conjuring up the dead, or other practices falsely supposed to unveil the future, consulting horoscopes, astrology, palm-reading, interpretations of omens and lots. The phenomena of clairvoyance and recourse to mediums all conceal a desire for power over time, history, and in the last analysis, other human beings, as well as a wish to conciliate hidden powers. They contradict the honor, respect, and loving fear that we owe to God alone." And so, we as Catholics are not permitted to be involved in these types of things, not to confine your life, but to liberate you and to give you the freedom to follow the one true God who will lead you and guide you, rather than some young college student at some newspaper in the back room writing little horoscopes out for us. And so, we're called to forsake things like this, Ouija boards and all of these, all of these things. It's amazing that we have the Bible, we have the tradition, we have the Pope, we have the Blessed Mother, we've got the Trinity, obviously, we've got the Scriptures, we've got the sacraments, the Eucharist, the liturgical year. We have everything that we would want to lead us and guide us in our life, and yet, we turn to these cheap counterfeits. And even if we turn to them in jest, in fun, it's still wrong. Adultery done in fun is still wrong. Stealing done for entertainment is still wrong. And so, it wouldn't be any different in any of these other areas. Remember the first question, "Do you trust God? Don't rely on anything else to harness the future." In verse four, it says, "You shall not make for yourself a grave an image," and it speaks about creating an image of God. And people will naturally ask, particularly when they go into a Catholic church, "Well, what about graven images? You Catholics have all these statues in your churches. Doesn't the Bible prohibit that kind of art?" Well, it did, but the Catechism tells us in paragraph 2130 and 2131, it tells us that everything changed with the incarnation of Christ. Everything changed. And it says, "In the Old Testament, we're not allowed to make an image of God because at this point, God has not been made manifest, all right? We don't know what he looks like. But the incarnation changes the whole economy of images to where now we're permitted to make an image that focuses on salvation." So, images of Christ, the Blessed Mother, Saint Joseph, the saints, pointing to salvation are completely permitted. And so, Exodus 20 gives us these wonderful laws. And as I said, we won't go through them, but you can read about them in the Catechism and go into great detail about each one of them and what the church teaches. Well, then, moving on from chapter 20, we have chapters 21, 22, and 23. And those three chapters are called literally "The Book of the Covenant." "The Book of the Covenant." The Book of the Covenant is made up of those three chapters, and the Book of the Covenant is basically made up of laws that Israel is supposed to obey, laws that deal with how Israel will treat the sojourner that comes among them. And you say, "Wow, that's three whole chapters just on how do you treat the sojourner? Why so much?" Well, these three chapters, "The Book of the Covenant", could be looked at as kind of the first Catechism for Israel on how do you treat other people. But why would God put such an emphasis on this? Here's the key. Israel, as a child, in 400 years of Egyptian life, was an abused child. Israel grew up in an abusive situation. And what happens oftentimes to those or with those who are raised in abusive situations? They grow up and they become abusers. That's all they know. And now, here's Israel coming out of 400 years of bondage. They've been whipped, they've been humiliated, they've been degraded, they've been made slaves. And now, suddenly, they're free. And they're going to be meeting the sojourners coming among them. And God says, "Treat them with dignity. Treat them the way that I treat you." And so, these three chapters make up what we would call "The Book of the Covenant." "The Book of the Covenant." Well, then, in chapter 24, in chapter 24, they read the terms of the covenant, and then, they all agreed to obey all the terms of the covenant in chapter 24. It says in verse seven, "All that the Lord has spoken, we will do, and we will be obedient." "All that the Lord has spoken, we will do, and we will be obedient." And then, a covenant ceremony takes place where blood, part of the blood is sprinkled on the basin, representing God, and part of the blood is sprinkled on the people, and this is part of the covenant ceremony. So here we are on your timeline chart, a new covenant, they are a holy nation. And then, in verses 15 through 18, Moses goes up on Mount Sinai. And he's up on Mount Sinai for how many days?
Forty days.
There's that number forty again, you know, the number of testing. He's up on that mountain for 40 days and 40 nights, and something is happening down below. Now, in chapters 25 through 31, Moses is going to receive something on the mountain, okay? What's he going to receive? He's going to receive a pattern for worship. He's going to, in a sense, have the veil pulled back, and he's going to see a heavenly reality of worship with furniture and a tabernacle. We know this because later in the book of Revelation, John sees what's happening in heaven. He too gets a glimpse of the heavenly reality of worship. But Moses, during all these chapters, 25 through 31, is getting this pattern of the tabernacle. And he's going to come down from the mountain in chapter 32. There's going to be some problems that we'll get to in a moment, but then, he's going to establish the pattern of worship in Israel. In other words, how do they succeed as the people of God and gain their identity and trust in God? It's very much centered around this liturgical worship and the tabernacle, okay? And it behooves us to take the time to understand this liturgical worship because in the Bible, worship is liturgical. It isn't just free, willy-nilly, what everybody wants to do today. It is liturgical. It is very formal. It is very organized, if you will. And so, in chapter 32, Moses hears from God in chapter 32, and it's actually very interesting what happens here. The people ended up down below doing what? They took the gold that they received from the Egyptians and they fashioned a golden calf. Remember the ten plagues? One of them was the bull god Apis, and they're addicted. They've got a problem with this one, and it keeps coming up over and over. It'd be like an alcoholic. It'd be like an alcoholic in that they struggled at one time. They were addicted to alcohol, but then they were set free. But then, tough times came, challenging times came, obstacles came. And what did they do? They went back to what they knew, the bottle, and they were hooked again. And this is what Israel does without Moses' leadership. They said, "You know, did you have to bring us out here in the desert to kill us? Weren't there enough graves back home?" And so, they took the gold and they fashioned a golden calf. Now, I think I told you before that I literally have a file in my computer, literally, of questions that I'm going to ask when I get to heaven, if I get to heaven. I do, I have the file. Somehow, I've got to get that file to heaven. And one of them is for Aaron. And I want to ask Aaron, because Aaron, finally, when Moses calls Aaron on it, he says, "Aaron, what's the deal?" And Aaron says, "Well, we put the gold in the pot, and out came this calf." Bull. I don't think he really believed that Moses believed that. Well, in chapter 32, Moses is up on the mountain, and look what it says in verse seven. "The Lord said to Moses, 'Go down.'" And I love this, "For your people, whom you brought out of the land of Egypt, have corrupted themselves and have turned aside quickly out of the way which I commanded them; they have made for themselves a molten calf. I have seen this people, and behold it is a stiff-necked people. Now therefore, let me alone that my wrath may burn hot against them, and I may consume them, but of you I will make a great nation." But then, what does Moses do? Moses begs the Lord, he intercedes on behalf of the people, he intercedes. Now, if I was Moses, I would have said, "All right. This is a good deal. This is very good. You see, we can start over. I like your idea, God. We can start over, we get rid of all the riffraff, all that bad habits that they've developed for the last 400 years. You know me, you can trust me, I won't do you wrong. We'll start over." That's probably what I would have done. But Moses intercedes for the people, says, "No." And I love what he does. He appeals in two ways. The first is your reputation. He says, "Why should the Egyptians say with evil intent, 'You brought forth your people out here to slay them in the mountains and consume them from the face of the earth?'" "God, you've got your reputation. You don't want all the neighboring nations saying, 'Yeah, he delivered them, then he killed them.'" You don't want that. But the second appeal is the strongest. He says, "Turn from your fierce wrath and repent of this evil against your people. Remember..." He says, "Remember," he's saying to God, "Remember Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, your servants to whom you swore by your own self." What is Moses saying? Moses is saying, "Lord, let me just remind you. You made a covenant. You made a covenant, you swore an oath." So Moses' appeal, his greatest appeal, is that the covenant of God is still intact. You can't do this. You're in a covenant. Now, did God need to be lectured by Moses? No, this is for Moses. No, this is for Moses' sake. Moses is learning to trust God. He's learning the power of covenant. You swore an oath, God. You swore an oath. And so after that, the Lord turns around and says, "The Lord repented." And that means shuv in Hebrew or metanoia in Greek. He turns and goes in the opposite way. He's not going to destroy them anymore. He's listened to Moses at this point. And I like what Moses says to God too. You know how God said, "Your people who you brought out of Egypt?" Moses in his appeal says, "Your people who you brought out of Egypt." So nobody seems to want these people at the moment. So God was not confused, and God was not working out his inner child or anything like that. But this was for Moses' benefit. And so you might have to, I might ask the question at this point, "Why does nothing happen to Aaron?" Has anyone asked that? A lot of other people ended up getting into a lot of trouble, didn't they? But why did nothing happen to Aaron? Well, I think it's actually good news. And Moses intercedes for him. He's guilty, yet he gets a pass. But remember, we're guilty, but we're forgiven. We shouldn't get so upset with Aaron unless we're gonna get upset with ourselves. I have a kind of a theory, and there's no way you can prove it, but I have kind of a theory, and that's this, that Aaron is forgiven in this situation for the sake of Moses. That Moses intercedes for him, but Moses needs him. And I think that this is one of those situations where there is forgiveness, release, due to the righteousness of Moses. God has mercy on Moses. Well, in chapter 32, there's a major change that takes place. We know that so far we have law. We know that so far we have a tabernacle. And now this idea of a nation of priests is reversed. What looked like a nation of priests now looks like a nation of laocized priests. That they're no longer really a nation of priests, but God chooses one tribe to become the priests. And that one tribe is who? The Levites. Over this problem of the golden calf, some corrupted the people, and those were judged. Those that judged them and executed God's judgment were the Levites. And God said, "Today, you've ordained yourselves priests." And so around the tabernacle, you have the Levites who are taking care of all the furnishings and the movement of the tabernacle. And you could say that the Levites are kind of deacons. They're deaconing. They're serving around the tabernacle. And the priests come from the tribe of Levi, but from the family of Aaron. Those are where the priests come from. So you have the Levites as deacons in a sense, and the priests are coming from the tribe of Levi, but from the family of Aaron. And they're responsible for all the furnishings and for the worship. And my friends, this is where the dreaded Book of Leviticus comes in. That book that nobody wants to read, or if they do, they get completely confused. And that Book of Leviticus is divided into two parts. Chapters 1 through 16 is the priestly code. It's for the priests. And chapter 17 on is the holiness code, and that's for the people and ministering to the people. So now the Book of Leviticus can mean, will mean much more to you in its proper place. So moving on, we see that not only has Israel received a new form of priesthood, but they have the liturgy and the tabernacle. And they also have the law. Those are the things that they received at Mount Sinai. Once again, for what? To lead them in being a nation of priests and the firstborn among the nations. But something else changes. In fact, we could say, everything else changes. Their whole life changes, from what they eat to what they wear, to their liturgical year. They have a complete year now where the days, the months, the hours, all mean something. Isn't that beautiful? God has laid out on the calendar salvation history, so that every year they'll revisit the great moments in salvation history. So starting with the Sabbath, every Sabbath day is holy, and they rest. Every seventh year is a sabbatical year. Every seven times seven years is the Great Jubilee. So their years are very much centered around freedom and what God has done for them. And then they have feasts throughout the year. Those three major feasts every year that were pilgrimage feasts. The Feast of Unleavened Bread, Passover, where they would go to Israel or go to Jerusalem later. The Feast of Weeks, Pentecost, fifty days after the Passover, commemorating the giving of the law, or for us, confirmation. The Feast of Tabernacles, living in booths to commemorate their journey in the wilderness. But the Catholic Church also has this, that the Church has saw in her wisdom that we should ourselves follow the life of Christ throughout the year. So we start with Advent. And Advent is the anticipation of the birth of the King. Christmas, the birth of the King. Ordinary time, where we have the teachings of the King. And then we move to Lent, the preparation for the most important part of the year, the death and burial and resurrection of the King. And then it's followed by Easter, the event. Followed by ordinary time culminating in the Feast of Christ the King. And so we too have our liturgical years. Someone may say, "Well, I'm so glad I'm not in that liturgical church." Really? That's the church Jesus started. That's the church that's the fulfillment of the liturgical Old Testament. Liturgy is the work of the people. It's very, very important. Well, after this, we have chapter 33 through 34, and that is the covenant renewal. Because the covenant was broken in chapter 32, there is a renewal ceremony here. And in chapter 33, it's sort of interesting because God says in verses 2 and 3 that, he says basically, "I'm gonna send an angel with you. I'm not gonna go with you. I'm liable to... I'm liable to kill you, you stiff-necked people. I'm gonna send an angel with you." And I love the response. They respond. Moses responds basically with, "If you're not gonna go with us, we're not going." Boy, that's all in, isn't it? Using a poker phrase. That's all in. "You're not gonna go with us, we're not going." And you know why they said that? And they said that, and the argument was this. And this is what Moses' argument was. "Is it not your presence among us that makes us distinct among the nations? The only thing that makes us different and distinct among the nations is that you are with us. If you aren't gonna go with us, we don't have a mission. If you don't go with us, we're not a distinct people." And then God said he would go with them. Now, why is that such an important point? Well, this idea of God being with us is very unusual. God is not distant, but he's here, even in our words. He's here. And in the New Testament opens up in the Gospel of John that the word is made flesh, the word dwelt among us. He tabernacled among us. God is with us. And as a Catholic Church, listen to this, what makes us distinct? What makes us different? And I say this not in a victorious way or triumphalistic way or pejorative way, but I say this as simply the way it is, in humility. What makes us different than Baptists? What makes us different than interdenominational people? What makes us different than covenant? What makes us different than reformed? What makes us different is that God, his real presence is in our midst, not because of something we've done, but what he's done. He has made himself present in the Eucharist, and in the tabernacle of Catholic churches across the world, God is with us. And so tonight, in this parish, perhaps in the parish that you're at where you're watching this video, you can go to adoration and sit and adore the Lord Jesus Christ. You can receive him into your body in every mass. That's what makes us different. That's why we drive behind, that's why we drive in front of a Catholic church. And what do we do? Oftentimes, we cross ourselves. Why? Because they got really nice brickwork. No. We cross ourselves, we bless ourselves. Why? Because we recognize that in that building right there, yes, God is out here with me, but truly present in a unique way, God is present in that building right now, and I have access to him. Wow. That is amazing. So God, going back to Exodus, he is going to be with them. And what's he gonna do? He's gonna dwell, he's gonna dwell on the mercy seat, which is in the, if you look at your diagram in your manual, you'll see, your workbook, you'll see that you have the outer court, and you have the holy place and the Holy of Holies. And inside of the Holy Holies, on top of the Ark of the Covenant, the mercy seat, God dwells his presence, his shekinah glory. And then he will lead the people by fire at night and a cloud by day. He will truly be present with them. We're no different today. God is truly present with us, and he leads and guides us today. What a beautiful, beautiful thought. So Moses cuts two new tablets. He places one before the Ark of the Covenant. And also before the Ark of the Covenant is Aaron's rod, signifying the priestly authority of the Levites in his ironic line. And also a bowl of manna before the Ark of the Covenant. And so we'll find out later in our story that, yes, there is an Ark of the Covenant. But that Ark of the Covenant is going to go here and there, and it's finally gonna be sealed in a cave in Jeremiah's time. But later, the New Testament Ark of the Covenant will show up. And John the Revelator describes that new Ark of the Covenant. Remember what's before that new ark? What is inside? The manna, the bread from heaven, the staff of Aaron, signifying the priestly authority, and the tablet signifying the word of God. What will be in the New Testament Ark of the Covenant? Jesus Christ, the word made flesh of bread from heaven, the Eucharist, and the King of Kings, and the Lord of Lords, the great high priest who goes into the Holy of Holies. Mary, the Blessed Virgin Mary, is the new Ark of the Covenant. And that's where we're gonna be going. And we'll start to see more and more how, as we get down the road in this story, we'll start to even guess at what's coming ahead and what's the fulfillment of many of these things that we are studying. Well, they build the tabernacle in chapters 35 through 40. They build the tabernacle, and Moses blesses the tabernacle as God blessed the Sabbath when he was done. It was good, and he blesses. If we had the time, we'd go into it, but there's a lot of wonderful relationships between the construction of the tabernacle, how long it took to construct and build, put up, and the whole story of creation. Because the tabernacle is like a microcosm of creation. It's where God is dwelling with us, just like God dwelt with Adam and Eve in the garden. "And so the cloud covered the tent of meeting, and the glory of the Lord filled the tabernacle. And as I said, God led with fire by night, with his presence, and a cloud by day, with his presence." And here's the key to it. And this is the beautiful thing, is that as God was present on Mount Sinai, remember the fire and the clouds and the lighting on Mount Sinai? God was present in a unique way on Mount Sinai. If you were there, the people were a bit afraid, but wouldn't it be grand? Wouldn't it be great if you could take that experience of God on Sinai and take it with you every day? Wouldn't that be great? That's what the tabernacle is all about. The tabernacle, the tabernacle is taking the presence of God on Sinai and making him now present in the tabernacle among Israel. And that's what makes him unique among the nations. We conclude this study with one year at Mount Sinai. The study will move into the next lesson where we're gonna look at the Book of Numbers. And it's in the Book of Numbers that they're going to end up breaking camp and moving north to go into the Promised Land. We'll get to that in our next lesson. But here we have seen that Israel took three months to come down to Sinai, spent a year at Sinai. Lots changed. But hopefully, they're learning to trust God more. You have to put yourself in their position and ask yourself the question, "Would you have trusted God? Would you have trusted God? Would I have trusted God if I had all of this? The tabernacle, the presence, the fire, the cloud, the Ark of the Covenant, Moses? Would I have trusted God?" Then we need to bring it into today. We do have the Eucharist, the Bible, the Catechism, the Blessed Mother, the saints, the Trinity, the tradition. We have everything. Twenty-four hour adoration. Do you trust God? Do you trust him? We find ourselves in Israel's position. So we conclude with a year at Sinai. And next, we will break camp to go north, but they're gonna face more struggles. We're gonna anticipate the Book of Numbers in the Desert Wonderings. When Israel gets complacent about God's presence in their midst, there will be trouble. So that's where we're gonna be heading up ahead. So I just want to conclude by encouraging you as you're reading this, make sure that you're taking your marker. You know, take your yellow marker, take your paint marker, your orange marker, whatever color, and really make some marks in your Bible, some of these significant pivotal points. If a particular scripture really grabs you, just make a note of that and make it a part of your prayer. "Lord, I see myself in Israel here. Help me to grow. Help me to trust you. Help me to see you in everyday living." Amen. Let's pray. "In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit." Amen. Lord, as we look through the life of, we travel through the life of Israel, Lord, sometimes we look at them and we say, "How long before they really trust you?" But Lord, all we have to do is look in the mirror, and we realize that we struggle with the same issues. Help us to completely trust you. You still lead by that fire and that cloud. You've given us the magisterium and the teachings of the church. They're secure, passed down from generation to generation. Lord, may we adhere to your word and humble ourselves in your presence and apply your word to our daily life. Lord, thank you for not forsaking us. Thank you for not leaving us on our own, but being with us. Thank you for tabernacling among us. We love you, we appreciate this. In Jesus' name, amen. "In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit."
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the video we're gonna be doing in our adoration. I think, when you're reading our Bible, we're gonna giggle. We're gonna say, "Oh, yeah." There's a lot of manifestation that's happening. Yet, we're asking them, "Do you still believe?" Do you still believe? And yet, when we're asking them, we have everything around us. What are you gonna do? Do you still believe? Even with a lot of manifestation that's happening. Okay, so let's proceed now. We go, okay, I think we need to leave.
Uh, and, uh, let's go. Before I start, there's a Zoom user. Who is it?
Ah, yes, yes. Uh, who is the Zoom user? Maybe those who are there. Hello, Paul. Who is John? Hello, Paul Zoom user. Hello po, Zoom user. Pwede po maakilala, sino kayo? Mala. Okay. Sige po. Oo nga na, ini-diri ko, diri-diri siya sa ano.
Ati lovi ko ba yan?
Diri-lovi daw.
Okay, good evening po ulit sa lahat. So 'yung readings natin sa session seven, gave focus on our relationship, uh, covenant relationship with God. 'Yung highlight is 'yung Ten Commandments. Tapos tayo will give focus on the first two commandments. Sa readings, nakita natin how the Israelites were slaved by sin, no? They forgot to put God first, and so God gave them a sort of parang wake-up call. Now, application natin, looking at our own lives, uh, we realize na tayo rin have been slaved by sin in the, in this present time, no? Like, just like the olden days. So for our reflections, we have the following questions. Uh, learning from the Israelites, what other things, ideas, or people have we put before God in our lives? And then, what shall we do about this, about them? Okay? Now, reminders lang po, uh, para sa ating, uh, small group discussion. So, uh, as always, we have, po, no? We start with opening and then reopening prayer, then may short introduction ng facilitator, and then the actual sharing of participants. Make sure that everybody is able to share. And then a clo- uh, closing prayer, kung kaya pa po. So, meron tay, we, eh, we suppose na we have answered po the questions. Tumindi naman po, we have, uh, we're given three minutes ba, ate Christine, to, uh, for them to write down kanilang, ano, kanilang responses, and then para babasahin na lang mamaya. Okay, so during the plenary, meron po tayong sharing of, ano, no? Uh, meron tayong group, uh, sharing. So, 'yung facilitator po ang magre-report for each, uh, ano, uh, group. Now, what, what will be highlighted would be what is common among the sharings and what is unique. Oo meron ba? Sige po, so thank you, ate Christine.
Let's also start po netin 'yung timer. While waiting po, meron lang po tayong tatlong grupo sa ngayon. Wala po 'yung mga kasama po ni ate Chee, so sinama ko po muna siya sa group three. Time's up po. So, pumuksaan ko na po 'yung atin po mga breakout rooms. See you later po. Ati Dan. Ati Dan.
Hi.
Hi. Hindi ka po ulit makapasok?
Hindi ko, hindi ko alam. Ikaw 'yung nakita ko eh.
Ay, hehehe. Click mo ulit 'yung ano po, baka meron po.
Ano yon, wala.
Wala?
Oo.
Nako ate, 'yung ano, internet mo nagalo ko na naman po, pagka ganyan.
Ano yon na naman po, let?
Gaga. Pagpasok mo sa kaka susunod, a yarn. My tito rin eh.
Hello.
Hello po. Nakakapasok po kaya, nakaka, ano po kaya? Talon-talon. Join na po ako sa breakout.
Simba po. So, tama ang tama po 'yung dasal natin, ano? Napapatsin natin na nabago-buhasan tayo. Maganda pong isama natin sa dasal natin niya. So, uh, natapos po 'yung mga sharing. So si ate Oli po pala si ano, si Zoom user. Okay?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Sorry po kasi kanina cellphone gamit po. Eh, hindi ko alam sa, nasaan 'yung video, at saka 'yung, 'yung speaker sound.
Ah, ah.
So nagitan ko ng laptop sa anak ko. Nagsatulog na po ako, pero hindi niyo ako naririnig. So dami kita na ako, pahiram na lang ng laptop. Nauman kay laptop sa office po eh. Kasi akala ko may pasok na 'yung biglang naging holiday.
Kasi, pag ganyan, ang una pumapasok namin is stoker ni, ni Brother Boots eh. Sige po, ate Chee, kayo po. Take it away.
So, meron po tayong four groups. Ate Christine, bumalik tayo sa four. Okay, so, kami lang naman dalawa ni ate Oli sa group one. I joined also group three, kaya lang naalis nga ako. Bumunta uli ako sa group one, tama? Alright, so we begin with, uh, uh, kung sino po 'yung ready sa mga group natin. Then we listen to the, ano po, sharer, facilitator ng group two.
Ay, ayoko yan? Ah, si, so, ang kasik member ko ay si ate Christine, si, si Brother Boots, si kuya Boots, si ate Dan. Tapos ako, ano? At exciting 'yung, 'yung ano, 'yung, 'yung aming sharing. Marami kaming nadidiskubre sa isa't isa. Mga, mga sikreto, ano, mga sikreto. Uh, uh, pero kung ika-cluster namin 'yung mga sharing ay pangunahin dun sa naging sharing ay 'yung, na inuuuna sa Diyos ay 'yung work, 'yung trabaho dahil ito'y pinanggagalingan ng pangangailangan, mga kailangan gampanin, uh, kaya lang mas madalas, uh, na, nahihila nung mas maraming gagawin pa dahil mas dumadami 'yung nagiging pangangailangan. So hindi na mamani si mga pangangailangan, uh, at dumadami lalo, tanggap lang ng tanggap ng trabaho, kaya ay, uh, gawa lang ng gawa without actually responding dun sa mga pangangailangan. Pangalawa dito ay 'yung, ano, 'yung sa kultura na sanay dun sa mga pamahiin, ano? Uh, matinkad 'yung, 'yung mga ganun na, na minsan mas nauuna 'yung, ano, 'yung, uh, natutunan sa mga ma, mas nakatatanda, no? Uh, isa na rito ay 'yung, uh, basta may handa, kahit hindi ka magsimba, uh, okay na yon, ano, basta may handa. So bahagi ito ng mga pamahiin na sinasabi, uh, mas 'yung kapangyarihan nung belief, nung sa mga ganun, klaseng mga, uh, paniniwala ang nanguuna kaysa sa Diyos, ano? And then 'yung pangala, mga, pangatlo ay 'yung ano, eh, 'yung, uh, uh, kung kailan lang kailangan ng Diyos, ano? Uh, parang, ano lang, parang, uh, uh, dumadalo'y lamang doon sa bawa. Kung ikaw ay, uh, nung nag-aaral pa, ay, uh, kapag may exam, dun mo lang naalala. Pero other than that, hindi mo na siya mahalala. And then, um, uh, relationships, no? Uh, nagiging pangunahin ang relationships. San ang mga tao? 'Yung mga, parang mas na-affirm ka kasi, mas konkreto 'yung, 'yung natatanggap mong mga, mga bate, mga, mga affirmation. Mas, uh, yun 'yung mas, uh, pinapahalagaan mo. So nauuna yon. Halos, uh, hindi na makita ang Diyos dun sa mga, sa dami-dami na mga relationships na ito. Minsan nagkakahalu-halu na nga. And then, uh, malaking, malaki at saka nasa proseso na magpa-hanggang sa ngayon ay, uh, struggle. Ay, 'yung, uh, emosyon, ano? Mga emosyon na maaring ngayon ay nandun at malapit ka sa Diyos. Pero kapag, uh, matinkad na, like 'yung galit, uh, nakakalimutan, mas madaling, uh, uh, pumunta doon sa, sa side ng, ng, ng emosyon na yon. Ganun din sa sensuality, sa, sa mga nag-share, no? Uh, uh, struggle to na, na, na mas naka, mas nananaike, no? Uh, so ang mga solusyon, ano? Mga solusyon na binanggit dito ay 'yung, uh, 'yung experience of God aligning 'yung work and the ministry na hindi dapat magkasalungat 'yung trabaho at saka 'yung ginagawa mo simbahan. Pangalawa ay 'yung, uh, pag tignan mabuti 'yung mga pamahiin na ito ba'y nakakatulong ba talaga? O, uh, mga ano na lang, uh, parang sumusnod ka na lang dahil ito ay sinabi ni lola o sinabi ni lolo. And then palitan mo 'yung mga bad companies and good companies, no? Mga, and then, uh, retain 'yung mga relationship na worth keeping. Uh, eto 'yung magka, magiging, uh, ano? Kung gusto mong maging malapit sa Diyos, sumama ka dun sa mga taong may karanasan na naging malapit sa Diyos. End of sharing po.
Thank you, kuya Nick. Ganda naman nun. Um, lalo na 'yung pag, pagiging, uh, tawag mo dito. Uh, you made yourself very vulnerable kasi, uh, parang napaka-personal ng sharing. Thank you very much po sa group two. At natututo din po kami kung paano i-handle 'yung, uh, narinig namin din sa group sharing namin. Salamat, kuya Nick. Alright, can we listen to the facilitator of group three?
Yes po, uh, good evening po. Um, sa group naman, mala, okay lang po 'yung, um, narinig po, okay. Sa group three naman po, 'yung aming sagot sa question, number one. Uh, 'yung number one pa rin po siyang work. Uh, talaga pong, uh, siya 'yung isang hindran para mapalapit tayo si Panginoon. Um, magiging siguro workaholic. Hindi laman po sa opisina, pati rin sa mga household chores po, uh, nagiging costing po siya ng nakakalimot na si Panginoon magdasal. Um, kahit 'yung simpleng mga bahay, ano, lalo na kung iyon din talaga 'yung, ano, ginagawa dun the whole day, uh, full-time housewife, ano, ganun po. So, uh, isa rin pong reason 'yung pong, uh, mga, 'yung preoccupation ng mind, na mainisip 'yung mga future or 'yung mga, uh, mga family, kung ano pa 'yung mga, uh, siguro 'yung business, kung ano 'yung pwedeng gawin, um, mga mahilig na mag foresight, kaya nakakalimutan din ang ating, ano, uh, pagtawag sa Panginoon. Nakakalimutan 'yung, 'yung, na, 'yung presensi ng Panginoon. Then, um, nagiging way din po yon ng, uh, pati po 'yung comfort pala. So, sa comfort kasi pag, siguro, uh, instead na, instead na dahil pagod na, uh, instead na magdasal or ano man, pag ma, sa gabay matutulog, eh, matutulog na lang, hindi na magtupray. So 'yung comfort dahil pagod na o ano man. Then, uh, nagiging reason din po yon na, um, siguro, pati rin 'yung mga, 'yung self-denial na, na, tsaka 'yung, uh, believing in yourself or relying on yourself na magagawa mo to, uh, na hindi ka nanitiwala sa Panginoon. Na mas pinaniniwalaan mo na, masosolusyonan mo 'yung, 'yung, 'yung problema mo or 'yung anything na, na nakaharap sa'yo na, uh, na pangangailangan mo compared sa, um, mag, ano, magtiwala talaga, lalo na 'yung mga beyond your control. Uh, yon po. Then, sa second question, ano po 'yung dapat gawin? So initially, syempre dapat po i-avoid. Pero how can we avoid those, ano? 'Yung mga hindran says by, o 'yung mga nanguuna with, uh, nagawain or things instead na si God? So, um, sa akin po merong, um, sinasabi na to be aware of God's presence. Then, uh, nag-aattend ng Sunday Mass. Then attending the community like this po, 'yung BTS or, um, meron din po community other than this po na inaattend. Then, um, always remember daw to pray. Uh, kasi minsan may time talaga na nalilimutan mag-pray, pero, uh, may, uh, tipong siguro 'yung konsensya or 'yung kulang na, ano, na nagre-remind, na, na, na narire-remind din namana mag-pray before matulog or before kumain, so yon po. And then, um, meron din pong, ano, um, dahil pong naririnig kay, uh, Father, sino nga ba? Nakalimutan ko po kasi daw po, uh, sa online mass, 'yung believe, trust, and surrender. At 'yung yun, sino nga po?
Father Jerry or Boss?
Father Jerry or Boss po, aw. Believe, trust, and surrender po sa Panginoon. Then, um, ang sa akin po, ano, uh, parang, uh, know yourself, know your, um, 'yung magkaroon ng self-realization, pray, ask forgiveness. Yon po 'yung, ano, then repent, then, uh, saka po 'yung managing siguro nung time para, para magkaroon din talaga ng time para sa kanya. Kasi kung hindi natin, uh, bibigyan talaga ng commitment, 'yung pagtawag sa kanya, 'yung specific time para sa kanya, uh, lagi natin malilimutan kasi marami tayong mga trabaho na, na sa tingin natin, um, laging dapat mauuna or ano man. So kung hindi natin bibigyan ng time, uh, ang bawat, uh, lalo na 'yung Panginoon, uh, hindi po talaga natin siya mauuna sa ating, ano, sa ating pangaraw-araw na buhay. Yan lang po. Thank you po.
Thank you, ate Marie Chris. Alright, we move now sa, ano, sa group, uh, number four. Facilitator ng group number four.
Kami yon?
Koyang Kit.
Yeah, uh, natasal ako, meron akong message dito. So, uh, 'yung, siguro kung i-co, i-coqualify natin, ano bang namamagitan, no? Uh, between me and God? Siguro mahahalo natin yon 'yung sa worship, no? Kasi, 'yung pinahamahalaga or 'yung worth. Uh, pagka idinagay mo yoon, uh, higit doon sa, sa Diyos, you end up worshiping that. Dahil, uh, yon ang pinahalagan, binigyan ng malaking value. So yon ang worship. Uh, there is money. Ah there is money, honor, and power. Ah minsan mala- yun ang talagang matitindi na ma- makahalayo sa atin doon sa kung ano yung ah worth sa atin, yung pinakamahalaga sa atin. Yung sinasabi nilang pearl of great price. Ngayon ko susumahin ko yung ano yung aking buhay ah doon sa ano yung paggising ko sa umaga, halimbawa. Ano ba yung inuuna ko na paggising ko? Kasi meron lang akong twenty-four hours a day ah doon sa ano na yon. Kasi yung ibang mga gagawin, halimbawa trabaho or yung kung ano man yung necessity sa buhay kailangan yung mga kailangan yun esang buhay. Papanong mamamagitan yun? Siguro kung kung susuriin ko yung ano yung yung question ay ano bang namamagitan sa akin ah para hindi ako magmahal no? Kung ilalagay ko sa ah sa kondisyon ko bilang ah tao na maguguhay twenty-four hours ah a day. So kung halimbawa ah like itong Latin season ah meron kang ah gustong gawin halimbawa ah yung sa panalangin halimbawa yung ah mas ah makahulugan ang aking panalangin sa Latin season na tour or mag-aabsen ako something. Pagkatapos ah mean ako sa akin sa wala ilabaho, hindi siya nagdenjoy di ba? Kung halimbawa kung ah inuuna ko yung pagmamahal ay ah yung ano any any time na tawag ako para magmahal, dapat ang response ko ay mahatdios na pagpamahal doon sa ah ano po ah dapat ko bumakalin. Ah kung halimbawa kung hirihiring sa akin na ah magpakumbaba or ah magpag- pagpatawan ah kung hindi ko gagawin yoon ay inuuna ko ang sarili ko kaysa dun sa Diyos. Kasi lahat lahat eh ah bakit tawag yung mga ah gawain natin, yung mga leisure natin. Minsan mga necessity yun sa buhay pero kung bawa doon sa pagkakataon na yon ay dininey mo yung iba sa iyong pagmamahal. So pinili mong hindi ka pagmahal ay yun ang sa akin na namamagitan between me and God. Because parang ano ang ang sabi- sabihin ko sa Diyos eh ah pinakita ko sa'yo ang pagmamahal ko ay sabi sa akin ng Diyos, pinakita ko ang ay sa'yo ang pagmamahal ko pero I will say to him, I do not care. No? I do not care but I will do it my way. No? Doon sa I hope I make sense no? Pero yun ang nasa sa isip ko ngayon yung ah ambasyahan ng pa- paglulagay ng anything between you and God is to fail to love your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Kuya Kit. Okay, um mamaya ipapa-summarize ko din sa yun. Alright, yung sa group one po ay um dalawa lang po kames kaming dalawa ni Ateoli pero um umikot po yung aming aming pag-uusap dun sa kanyang dun sa kanyang sharing dahil ah gustong-gusto ni Ateoling mag- magbahagi kanina no? So ang unang-unas siguro po pwedeng ah pagpatulong kami sa sa grupo sa tanong na pwede bang um maging panalangin ko ang trabaho ko? Ah kung nagtatrabaho ako ay ay ino- honor ko naman ang Diyos dahil gumagawa ako ng mabuti sa trabaho ko. Ah conscious ako na na ang Diyos ang aking pinaglilinuran sa kapag ako ay nakikipagtrabaho and I translate that into prayer. Tinatanong po naming dalawa, is that alright? No? Is that okay? No? So it is a it is a question na dumating. Tapos yung pangalawa um napaka-attractive po ng Netflix no? Napaka- napaka-attractive ng mga episodes na from one to fifty-one episodes. Yung yun ang yun ang na umahaba no? Ninanakaw ng Netflix, ninanakaw ng trabaho ninanakaw ng mga iba't-ibang concerns ang oras. Kaya pagdating ng ano pagdating ng ah panahon, wala ng oras para sa Diyos. So ah para para sa ah tinatanong po namin kung kung twenty-four-seven, eto yung nangyayari nawawala nga ang focus sa Diyos pero ang ang perspektibo ay ito naman ay alay ko sa Diyos eh, ito naman ang when I work and my my work is also my prayer. Parang ganun po yung aming pinag-usapan kanina. So siguro po mamaya pag nagkaroon tayo ng ano ng ah summary, if we could also answer that that question that is um that is lingering no? And ah so that we will be able to decide well in terms of how we worship our God and at the same time how we focus really our our concerns to this God um who gives everything to to all of us no? So yung yung parang summary ko lang po na from the difference sharing. A lot maraming bagay ang kumukuha sa attention natin. Ah matindi yung ah example ni Kuya Nick ano yung sensuality. Marami ding yung sa mga pang- ah paniniwala na hindi namang palay to and we're creating other gods. Ah yung sinasabi ni Kuya Kit na ano ba yung prioridad ko? Ano yung ano yung um anong namamagitan between me and my worship and between me and my and my work? Ah ano ba yung pinapahalagahan? So lahat ng ito nakikita natin ang ang what can we do about it? It's really yung nakuha ko lang po sa sa sharing ay tignan kung saan natin pwedeng bigyang panahon ang Diyos. In English sinatawag natin siyang time management. If we are given, if we are given twenty-four hours within a day, can we allot a certain moment to be with God? So ang tawag ni Kuya Nick nito winning our mornings or tawag ni Kuya Kit kanina, how do we begin our day? No? So yun po yung yung parang kapag tayo ay nalilibang na, kapag tayo ay nilalayo na ang attention natin at ang work natin at ibang household chores ang ang nagiging focus natin. Can we decide tonight that there will always be a moment dapat for God? And and itong moment na ito ay yung yung sinasabi ng mga shares kanina, itong moment na to binibigay ko sa Diyos para lahat ng bagay na mangyayari sa akin ay manggagaling dun sa encounter ko sa kanya. So it is really a complete surrender, a complete surrender to to our God. And we will allow God to be in control of our life and um we will be receiving a unique kind of joy if everything that we do comes from prayer, driven by faith. Eto po yung mga nakukuha po lang sa ating sharing ngayon. Salamat po.
Thank you, Miss Chip no? Thank you, Miss Chip. Naalala ko tuloy yung ano yung isang ah joke ano? Yun daw mga akyet bahay gang bago sila umakyet sa bahay na para magnako ay nagsasign of the cross. Hahaha. Talagang.
There is a real story Nick na kung eban ko kung ano to um dito sa Pampanga mataas ang insurgency hindi ba? Yung ah mga taong labas, dito po dito maraming ano ganun. And ah may nangyaring isa-isang lugar, nagdasal muna siya bago niya or ay pinuha yung buhay ng isang tao. Parang ganun na parang napaka-confusing no ng ng mga ano natin.
Okay po. So na 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 lang yung joke na yan. Kuya Rene, take it away.
Yeah, okay. Ah siguro para to pave the way for the conclusion ah let us try to ah see judge and act ano ha? Yung sa questions na ni raise ka din may may Atitip na pwede ba na yung trabaho natin, yun na rin ang dasal natin? Ah well, I got this from the principle of August Day no? Um the the inside there is that ah if we are a purpose-driven Christian, a purpose-driven disciple or a purpose-driven Catholic, if we are fully aware of the vocations that we have. Say for example, your vocation being a spouse, your vocation being a parent, your vocation being a professional, your vocation being an employee among the others. If you are aware of these vocations meaning, if you are aware that these are the callings that God gave you as a person and if you would focus on them and commit to the Lord, Lord, for all of these purposes you have given in my life, I will do them with my best and I offer them to you as my prayer, the answer is yes. The answer is yes, alright? Ah but first and foremost, they should be purposeful and intentional. Hindi ko nga na lang maisip mong gawin, gagawin mo tapos sabi mo yun na rin yun na rin ang dasal ko. Hindi eh. Ah we have to be purpose-driven in the same manner that Christ lived his life no? Because he was purpose-driven, anything and everything he did was born out of prayer. In the same token, tayo sana ganun din. But the question is, not too many are aware of their vocations. Not too many are aware of their purposes in life. That is why too many are getting lost in the mire of the tasks and activities that they eventually face. Ah kanina I heard yung one the sharing na parang ang ginagawa natin is yung yung work no? When you really think about it, it's not work that we are making na God no? Ah work is only a means, but chances are ang habol natin yung rewards na nakukuha natin out of work. Some get money out of work, some get honor out of work, ah some get pride out of work. So yung money, yung pride, et cetera, power, these are the gods that we are serving through work. Kaya na di disorient tayo no? To the point that when we are really task-centered, we spin around like a top without realizing if we are accomplishing anything. And at the end of the day, we don't have the right thing, we don't have the right time for the right things. No? So twenty-four-seven is wasted. Why? Because as responsible stewards, we were not able to manage the twenty-four-seven that is given to us. Ah on the side lang, ah part of what I learned when I was still young in the ah in the corporate world is that we will learn to dissect ourselves holistically. Alright, as a person, number one, we are spiritual. Number two, we are mental. Number three, we are physical. Number four, we are social. And number five, we are also financial. Now, if you are a responsible person and you would like to grow holistically, then this should be put on an order, like how much time will you appropriate for each one of those? If you can do that, that is more that is more than and better than simply time management. Ah please note, time management is a misnomer because we can never manage time. As we are talking about time right now, time is passing away, we cannot even save it. So what can we manage? We can only manage ourselves. How? Spiritually, physically, socially, mentally, and also financially. Alright? Now, going back, ah I I hope I was able to help some ah with regards to the questions kanina ah regarding ah can work be our prayer or can ah yeah can work be our prayer again? The answer is, I'm sorry?
Thumbs up si Atitip.
Ah okay, thank you for the thumbs up, Atitip. Um that that that's very critically important no? Ah in fact uh if we can only be very clear about our purposes in life, anything and everything we do can become a prayer. Unfortunately, alright, ah the enemy has succeeded in blinding many of us no? Ang dami niyang ino-offer, halimbawa yung Netflix. Please understand, the people behind Netflix are all highly professional people. They are highly paid to attract viewers. They are highly paid to make the viewers spend time for Netflix. So you can just imagine how strong this power is no? And we are subjected to this, just like the Israelites were subjected to Egypt. You you get a picture. So sabi nga nung ang pinagkasya, learning from the Israelites. So who were this this realites? These are the firstborn of God no? See, they are the first nation that God chose to be for himself. And yet when they were in exile, alright, they were enslaved in Egypt. Imagine for four hundred years, sabi nga ni Kuya Jeff sa kanyang video, they thought like the Egyptians, they ate like the Egyptians, they worshiped like the Egyptians. And we know very well that Egyptians were polytheistic, meaning ang dami nilang mga gods no? So ah the Israelites, the chosen people, for four hun- four hundred years were immersed in this kind of a lifestyle. This was their exposure. So in effect contaminated na sila. Alright, they they already have been so immersed that they have become like Egyptians already. Kaya nga sabi ni Kuya Jeff, the challenge was no longer taking the Egyptians, taking the Israelites out of Egypt. But rather, the bigger challenge is taking Egypt out of the Israelites. In the same token with us, we claim to be Christians, we claim to be Catholics. Learning from the Israelites, ah we Christians and Catholics are the chosen people of God. And God ah with like like the Israelites, when they were having the tough time as slaves for four hundred years, they must have kept on crying. And God heard their voice and he started to come down and revealed himself to them. God even made the way, alright, to get them out of bandage through Moses, leaving them out of Egypt and then leading them to the promised land. And that's why do sa kandila Sinai journey, they even had the time for their retreat no? For their formation. In the same token, that is also what we are going through right now, very timely for then. So we too, just like the Israelites, we've been exposed now or we are even being exposed now to a lot of things just like Egypt been no? Wordliness, secularism, materialism, ah relativism. Ang daming mga isims niyan na komakain sa atin. That without us knowing it, since we are exposed to these elements, we have already been contaminated. Ah you you see the picture? We're no longer pure Christians and pure Catholics, contaminated na tayo eh. Now depending on how much you allow yourself to be exposed to these elements, we're also be the be indicative rather of how of how, just like the Israelites, we behave to be. Meaning therefore, unknowingly, we put things, we put ideas, we put people ahead of God. So sila'y nagiging yung yung san natin without us knowing it. Now, God gave us a way. He gave us the Ten Commandments. This is actually called the law of love. They are not the ruthless law no? The Ten Commandments are the law of love. Jesus simplified them, two laws. The law of the love of God and the law of the love of our fellow men. And then together with the law of love, he gave us another ah shall we say medium and that is worship. And he gave us the best worship no? As sabi nga ni Kuya Jeff, our gift of worship is available twenty-four-seven. Anytime and every time we just can go to the Adoration Chapel and sit down in front of Jesus himself and adore him. Di ba? What better medium of worship can you have? Ah considering that we have all of this, we have the sacraments, we have the saints, ah we have ah ah the the sacred scriptures, sabi nga ni Kuya Jeff, we have everything. Now therefore in conclusion, bottom line, this is the tough part. The choice is ours. Alright, the choice is ours. Ah shall we? Alright, the choice is ours. Uh shall we choose to be proactive or shall we choose to be reactive? So what do you mean by proactive? By proactive, we choose to become, uh shall we say, responsible over who we are, what we have and what we do by the grace of God. Very, very easy to say, very difficult to do. So how do we do it? Again, we are given the formula. Prayers, we have study, we have fellowship with fellow Christians, and then we also have service that we can render for others as a manifestation of our faith. Okay? So and uh second of all, uh having having said that, alright uh we we practically sometimes are just blinded that we fail to see what is really essential and what is not. No? Again, please understand, just like the Israelites, they had Egypt as their uh as the as the bondage. So we two now ah have this worldly, uh shall we say, predicaments that is putting us into bondage. Sometimes we call it con- coupons. Yung binagat niyo kanina, they are just part of them. So what do we do with them? Alright, that's what we are now going through our studies. Conclusion is that we really need a metanoia, a transformation, a change of our mindset. Alright? And how is that? Again, a beautiful exercise for Lent, uh fasting, abstinence, prayer, and amsgiving. Uh what should we fast or abstain from? The law of the flesh or what we call as inordinate attachments, inordinate desires, or inordinate appetites. Okay? And then as we fast, we carry on with prayer. And this is when we make our sufferings as sacrifices. Not all sufferings are sacrifices, but all sacrifices will entail sufferings. So we make our sufferings sacrum facere, we make them holy as the essence of Lent. And why should we do that? In recognition, number one, anytime and every time we cry, God is there listening to us and coming down to help us. He has done everything to get us back, including giving us his own son. And thirdly, he has given us also a medium of communicating with him in love and that is through worship. So in conclusion, we have everything. We have prayer, we have worship, we have fellowship. And if we can embrace that with the people of God, then hopefully, more than the Israelites, we're learning how to live the kind of a life that God wants us to have. And that is a life of true happiness and joy, a life with success and that is full of hope. Thank you for listening. May God bless all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Kuya Rene. Pakipusuhan natin si Kuya Rene. Let's see mga reaction.
Thank you po.
Yo po. Daim po. So happy valentines.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Ay yo, I bless. Nandyan pala si. Okay, sige po. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Prosin na tayo kuya sa ating closing prayer and blessing.
Okay. May the Lord bless us and keep us. May the Lord make his face to shine upon us and be gracious to us. May the Lord lift up his countenance upon us and give us peace. And may the blessings of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be upon us all now and for always. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Yeah, by the way po, 'yung ating blessing prayer is the blessing of Aaron. Alright, so that's the ironic blessing. Okay, once again, maganda gabi po sa inyong lahat.
Auntie Christine Zoomee.
Kuya Val, pabukas po ng camera.
Kuya Val.
Hi.
Yon.
In three, two, one, smile everyone. Okay na po.
Thank you. Thank you po. Bahiwan ng contest.
Thank you po.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Night. Happy weekend.
Good night. Next week po, next Friday.
God bless.
God bless.